Hello and welcome. You're viewing the Citizens Journalist Podcast Mesa County Compass that brings you the news that you can use from a different point of view. I'm Ruth.
I'm Lisa.
And together we are Mesa County Compass. Our goal is to create an informed, current, active citizenry armed with facts. We will be covering what's new, what's new to you, what it means to you, what you can do about it, and provide you access to the decision makers when we can. Good afternoon. We are here with Mesa County Compass this afternoon, and we have Ken Scissors, who is running for city council. And he's going to be explaining a little bit about himself and what he stands for. Welcome, Ken.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
To begin with, let's give a start with who you are, where you came from, and why you decided to run, in that order.
Yeah.
You bet. So I'm Ken Scissors, and I was born in St. Louis, Missouri. And I went to school and trained there in both undergraduate and medical school. And then I moved around the country, getting my career started. I ended up in Portland, Oregon, where I practiced until 1998. I got tired of the rain and the gloom and the crowds and the expense and the crime. And I had a six-year-old boy, and I just, you know, said, this is not working anymore. And just by happenstance, I discovered Grand Junction. I met some people, and they were touting how great of a place it is. And oh, by the way, we have an opening in our emergency room group, and we're really looking for somebody like you. And I thought, hmm, maybe I'll just do it. That sounds great. And came out to visit, fell in love with it immediately, and moved here in the summer of 1998. I started working in the emergency room at community hospital. And I did that for six years. It was great. My son was young. I was able to work night shifts and then be there for him during the day, and his little blur- bleary-eyed, but it worked. It was kind of the dream, walking my son to school, coaching his Little Leagues and all, and all like that. So that job really allowed me to, you know, maneuver around day-night schedules so I could kind of have it all. And then my actual training is in internal medicine. That's really my main field. I can do emergency, but internal medicine is really what I'm board-certified in, and a position opened up at the VA. And I thought, well, that's really good. So I made that move, and that's where I had most of my career here at the VA. And then I retired from that in 2015, and I still had a little juice left in me. I wasn't quite ready for full retirement. And they weren't taking any part-timers at the VA there anymore. So I found a part-time spot at St. Mary's, and I finished my career there and retired in 2020.
In the emergency room again?
No, still in internal medicine.
Oh, yeah, right. Okay, great. Oh, because that's right, you were one of the hospital.
I was a hospitalist.
Yes, yes. And what do you, just kind of off, it wouldn't normally be on my beaten path, but what do you think about the hospitalists versus, you know, the doctors that are moving into that versus just your regular practice?
Yeah, well, it's, I think it's a mixed bag. In some ways, inpatient medicine has gotten so complicated and so technical that it's really, really hard for someone who's in their office all day long to also take care of a patient in the hospital. Because things, in the old days, the hospital was a simpler place. Patients would stay in much longer, there wasn't so much testing, a lot of it was just giving things time. And you could, and I did that earlier in my career. The hospitalist thing is kind of new. You could go see them in the morning, then go to your office, see all your patients, come back at the end of the day, you know, that routine. But it moves too fast for that now. And so the hospitalists serve a role by just letting the regular primary care doctors just work in the office, see their patients, and if they get real sick, put them in the hospital. Us hospitalists will take care of them for you, get them all fixed up and situated, and we'll get them in and out fast, and then send them back to you for aftercare. So I think it's maybe not quite as personal, so that's the trade-off. But it is more efficient, and probably, given the complexities, probably more effective, too.
Well, we were just talking about, well, before you go on, and our favorite thing is you have a wife, and you like the outdoors, and you have two dogs. That makes you good with us.
Dog people, yeah.
Yeah, dog people. So what things do you like to do in the outdoors? And with, that's always fun to know.
Yeah, sure, yeah. I mean, the best is if I can do it with everybody. So my wife and the dogs, and if my son's in town, there's things we can all do together. So hiking, I live out here in the Redlands, and I can hike right out my back door. I'm very lucky. And there's so much hiking. I've been here 27 years, and I keep discovering more places to go. So that's great, and you can bring the whole crew. We also like to cross-country D, and we bring our dogs on that.
Oh, that's great.
And they've got the little booties.
Oh, cute.
They just love it. They roll in the snow, and it's a big social scene up there at County Line. Everybody's, so we see everyone we know, and it's just a great time. So we do a lot of that on weekends. And then on my own, I could be found on the tennis courts or maybe on the downhill slopes. And a lot of biking, I mountain bike, I road bike, I kind of do it all.
And you're running for the at-large position?
That's correct.
Okay, so, and if anybody doesn't know, we vote for all of the city council. It's just that each candidate has to come from their own district, and in your case, you're representing the entire city.
Correct.
With that. So we were just talking before we turned this on about parallel parking and Fourth and Fifth Street. So that's always, so, one of my first questions are, were you in favor of the Fourth and Fifth Street project? And do you support the project now?
Well, when it came about, I just didn't even know about it. There wasn't an opportunity to be in favor or opposed. The Bike and Ped Plan, actually, it's called the Pedestrian and Bicycle Plan, I think.
Ted Plan, I think is.
No, it's not the Ted Plan. That's different. This is, this is the Pedestrian and Bike Plan. So the city has had a Bike and Ped Plan for a long time, but it was never really formalized. It wasn't, you know, fully professionally done. So they decided to make it more formal and official. And that came out of the comprehensive plan. There was, you know, a lot of expressed desire to, you know, get on with that. So there is a plan, and that did go through the planning commission for approval or recommendation. But the Fourth and Fifth Pilot Experiment, whatever they call it, did not come through the planning commission, so I didn't know any more about it than anybody else. It was a wake-up-one-day-and-read-it-about-it-in-the-newspaper kind of thing for me. So I can't say whether I was for it or against it in the beginning. But once I saw what it was, I realized that they really had gone beyond what was in the Bike and Ped Plan that had been adopted by, you know, approved by the planning commission, adopted by the city just a year ago. So I was a little confounded as to why, if they're going to do something, they just didn't do what was in the Bike and Ped Plan.
And what would that, what would that have looked?
That would have been much simpler.
No, but what would it have looked like?
Yeah, it would have looked, everything would have looked the same as it did originally. Now, I'm not going to speak to two lanes versus one lane. That's not in the Bike and Ped Plan. That was a different decision that, again, I didn't have anything to do with. We can talk about that, but just focusing on the bike aspect. On the Bike and, on the Ped and Bike Plan, all it is is striped lanes right next to the curb, which is pretty much what we're familiar with all around town, right? You have that right out here.
Right, exactly.
And that doesn't change the parking, it doesn't, you know, there's, it's fine.
It doesn't disrupt life as we know it?
Yeah, you just look at that and go, oh, that's nice, the bicyclists have a nice lane there. But you drive just like you normally do.
Right, and try to give them three feet, so they don't feel in danger.
It's a share-of-the-road situation, that's a nice, balanced, like, non-threatening situation, and for most roads, that's fine. And the Bike and Ped Plan, identified Fourth and Fifth, is just requiring that level of bike facility. Sometimes something, you know, more separate is needed because it's a, you know, high-speed, busy road, high traffic, and just a simple bike lane isn't enough. But Fourth and Fifth did not qualify for the ballasts and all the separation and all that stuff. So I was just surprised to see that we didn't follow our own plan there. And then when I, you know, drove around there and experienced, I understood why people were concerned, because the parking got messed up and just too much stuff. So I think it was just an overshoot, really. And then, in terms of two lanes or one lane, honestly, that's the kind of thing that's just really up to the traffic engineers. The goal was to make, to slow down the traffic and make it safer. Whether that could have been done retaining the two lanes or required going to one, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I, you know, I think one thing as a city council person is, we're not engineers, you know, we're not economic scientists. There's a level of detail that we have to just say, that's up to the departments, the experts, and it's really a city manager's job to oversee those and approve or disapprove those. So I'm not going to weigh in on that issue.
But don't you think, as a, you know, as a person in the public, I question whether there was a need to make a change at all, because, you know, those are thoroughfares, especially Fifth Street, coming off of Orchard Mesa, and it is the way you get downtown. And to say that, I don't know that it warranted change because people were doing just fine before they made the changes to Fourth and Fifth, and there are alternative streets. You know, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask a bicyclist, if you want to feel safe, because growing up here, I bicycled, my kids bicycled, we went downtown, and if we thought a street wasn't safe, we didn't go on that street.
Sure.
And I don't know that for, you have some responsibilities as a cyclist, too, to say, you know, it's like driving. You drive defensively. You may have the right of way, but is it, do you want to be dead right? Instead of just moving on, because that could be, I was in the right of way, and I got killed, but okay. But you know, how much of that is saying, we're going to for such a small percentage of the population that uses it as a form of modality, as opposed to recreation? Because I see, you know, bicycles for years, recreation, but like for somebody from Orchard Mesa, it's not feasible for them to ride their bike down and back and down and back and
Right.
Different things, and to say, we're going to make all these changes for this smaller group, when maybe the smaller group, and we can say one block over, we can make sure that that's safe, but not take the major thoroughfare that people are going in and out of town on.
Yeah, well, I think, I mean, I think there's a place for what's called an active transportation network. So like a planned system, the people who do use their bike for transportation, some people do, and it's kind of a self-fulfilling prophecy. If you don't have safe routes, people won't bike. If you have them, more people will. And for some people, not everybody, especially in today's world of housing costs, not everybody can afford housing and a car. And also, a lot of people live in the downtown area, it's short distances, and they just assume, drive a bike. So I don't think the concept of having a multimodal or an active transport network is, I think it's a good thing. And like I said, there was a really robust effort to devise an active transportation plan, and the public was involved in that. It was a really thorough process, and I think the plan they came up with was good. And like I said, for Fourth and Fifth, it was pretty basic, pretty simple, just.
Put some stripes down there.
Put some stripes and a lane next to the curb, and that would have sufficed. That in and of itself would not have affected motorist traffic in any significant way or parking.
It wouldn't have been near the controversy it is now.
I think we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Right, well, you're probably right.
If they would have just stuck to the original plan, it would have been.
And why do you think they didn't?
I don't know.
You have no idea?
I really don't, because I wasn't involved in it, and I don't know any more than anybody else does about it. I don't have an inside track to that.
Right, well, I just wondered if part of it is, this is another area that, it's a big concern to me, is frequently, city council goes, well, we've got to get an outside consultant. And I think if it's beyond your expertise, maybe it's something you don't need to be doing to the city, to hire somebody from Denver that's a boutique firm and say, yes, this is what we need to do, and this is what you need to do, that isn't familiar with the city and doesn't live here. You know, I would much rather have Trent Proll coming up and saying, he lives here, he's lived here 28 or more years, been doing that. It would seem like his expertise would suffice for making a design like that.
I don't really know what the process was, and because we had a consultant for the Bike and Ped Plan.
Right.
So to me, the question of what to do with Fourth and Fifth had already been asked and answered.
Okay, okay.
So that's why I keep saying, I'm just, I don't really know why we deviated from our original plan. Because we had everything. We had a consultant, but we also had in-house people, Trent, and Trent was involved in that. I was on that subcommittee. We had lots of, we had bicyclists, we had all kinds of people, not just bicyclists. We had a very diverse, like stakeholders group, citizen advisory group, whatever you want to call it. And I think we came up with a really good plan. I don't know why we deviated from the plan, but if we hadn't, we wouldn't be having this conversation. And it wouldn't be an election issue, right?
So now you're on the city council. I always get to wave my magic wand.
Oh, I am?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we're done on that.
So what are you going to do?
About?
About Fourth, Fifth, and Seventh. What would you say?
Well.
What would your plan moving forward?
Well, my understanding is that a decision's already been made to revert it to what was on that original plan. So I guess I would just say, I would ride hurt on that and make sure that actually happens. Restore the parking to normal, simple striped bike lanes. Thank you very much. Next issue, please.
Yes.
All right. And Seventh Street's a whole nother conversation, but honestly, as sideways as this one went, I would favor just hitting the pause button on addressing Seventh. Seventh is more complicated, there's multiple segments, it's not going to be the same thing all the way. And each of those segments has to be treated, you know, individually, like, you know, up to, south of Grand, downtown, up to Grand is very different than when you cross Grand and go up to north and so forth. You have historic districts, you've got a hospital district, it's complicated. So right now, there's, what they're doing right now is what they're calling a feasibility study. That's way before anything is like decided or penned in. It's a lot of penciling and erasing and talking and just trying to figure out what is even possible. And getting the feedback before starting to spend money on painting lines and putting in barriers and whatever. So I think that feasibility process is a really good way to do it, because there's some expense, because there's a consultant and everything, but it's not nearly the expense of moving concrete around and painting and all the other things. So that's all that's happening now, but even that, in light of the brouhaha over Fourth and Fifth.
Maybe you should pause that, too.
Pause button, thank you very much. Because, and this is, we could talk about this phenomena of getting in a hurry to do things, when in fact, there is no reason to be in a hurry.
Right.
So you should, and some of this is second nature to me, because this is a way you practice medicine. Say, somebody comes into the emergency room, and, you know, they're just sitting there chatting with their family, and they say, oh, you know, I have a stomach ache or whatever, but you can look at them, take their vitals, they're not like, it's not like a true emergency.
Exactly.
So we don't throw everything at them right away. You know, we'll take it one step at a time. Check them in, get their history, maybe a couple tasks, come back and check them, things like that. If somebody comes in, you know, with a bullet wound or something, or a car.
You're going to be moving.
We got it, we, so that's an emergency. That, and you can't be as careful and cautious and detail-oriented. You got to stop the bleeding, you got to give them the IV fluids, you know, all the stuff you see on TV. So just the idea of like, like, one of the first things you should always do with a problem is say, well, how urgent is it? Right? Is this something we can take our time and really get to careful, just right, feasibility study before we paint kind of thing? Or is this an urgent situation, we just got to get something on the ground right away? And I feel like, I mean, I don't want to be super critical of the city or the city council, honestly, I, my feeling is, in the bigger sense, just stepping back and looking at the city from when I moved here 27 years ago and now, I think a lot of good things have happened, a lot of progress has been made, but.
Okay, and just stop right there, because that's a good thing. So in what areas do you think you've seen progress? And going along, maybe in 10-year or five-year increments, what you've seen that you thought was a good move? And what they've done?
Sure. I think probably the biggest thing, the most general thing, is our economy has really shifted to much more diverse, not so reliant on one sector that has some boom and bust. So I think lessons were learned in the 80s, that was before I was here, but obviously that was catastrophic, and lessons were learned, and there was a push, I think, from all directions, but I think the city took leadership there and has worked with the Chamber and with GJEFF and the Business Incubator, Downtown Development Authority, and many others, to really diversify our economy and try to bring in some more entrepreneurial spirit, get some young people with some fresh ideas in there, and all like that. And I think, I think that's worked. I think our economy, you know, we all have the limits of the national economy and the global economy. We can't fix those, but given, given the bigger world we live in.
Right.
We've done pretty well, and it's made a big difference. And I think the ramifications of that spread throughout the community, I think. Parks have improved, riverfront districts are coming up. I think, I think the city is cleaner, too. When I first came here, like, I live over on Little Park, we talked about that, and when I first moved here, I liked to recreate there, but there was broken glass everywhere, and it was junky cars and people, you know, it's the whole environment to me, and I mean literally, like, the living things, but also just generally, the environment, is cleaner and better organized and better monitored, and when something, you know, needs fixing or cleaning up, it happens. So, and I think there's more cultural amenities, there's more restaurants, there's more art, more music, all those kind of things. I can't comment too much about the schools, but I can say, when we got here, we, my son went through public schools, and he was a good student, he got to be in honors programs, and they were there for the students' needs, whether they were at the high end or the low end. He graduated from Junction High, took a lot of honors courses, got into the college of his choice, so I've been happy with the school system. That's not as much of a city issue as it is a county, but
Right.
This city has a role, like, with the Grand Junction High School and so forth. So, yeah, so I feel like it's been across the board, just generally moving in the right direction. But like we've talked about, there've been some wobbling and some missteps that I think mostly had to do with this issue that I was getting at, maybe I got too long-winded, about just knowing when to move fast and when to kind of pause a little bit and make sure things are stable and the money is there before spending on things that would be more in the amenity category rather than the.
The necessity category, yeah.
That's what I was going to ask you then. What do you really think that the role of city government is?
Well, I think we're getting right close to it in this necessity amenity. So people pay their taxes through various means, sales, property and everything. Most of the city's revenue comes from sales taxes, but whatever, it comes out of our pocket, whether it's going.
This pocket or that pocket?
So it's citizen money, that's what governments do, right? And we don't want them to do more. We don't want them to go out in the private sector and compete and like open a retail shop and things. So they have a limited budget, and the first order of business is taking care of the basic needs.
Which are?
Safety, transportation, you know, education, parks, housing. Housing where it's needed, not like have million-dollar homes, but helping out the housing for the people who just can't make it on their own.
You think that's the role of city government?
Well, for the ones who just can't, you know, can't get it from the private sector. So that, I would say, and I think the private sector is completely in agreement. I just went to the Builders Association Forum, their first annual one, and I don't think there's any disagreement. The private sector builds most of the houses, but there's a level of, you know, lower-end houses that they can't build without losing money. And the city has to either help them, build them, or enable the nonprofits to build them.
Why can't they afford to build them?
Because building costs are just too high.
Are you sure that's the only reason? I mean, is it impact fees, or is it regulations that are a problem that increase the cost of housing building? Because we've had, and I know Hogan, you guys have served together, and he said.
Oh, yeah, Hogan and I get along great.
I know, that's what he said. He thinks you're great, too. He says you're very reasonable. But when, he said, there's $100,000 worth of fees and everything that a builder has to put in before he can even start building a home.
Bring infrastructure.
So it's, and then if you add an impact fee on top of it of $37,000 or whatever, then you've increased that cost of housing even more. So maybe some of those impact fees or some of the regulations don't need to be there to bring down the costs so that you can build a house that's more affordable. I mean, if I know that I've got $100,000 in there.
I don't disagree with any of that, but you still, you get to a level, so there's.
But you shouldn't be able to build it cheaper than an individual contractor should.
No, I don't think, first of all, the city's not building your houses. They're enabling, or, there are some builders that specialize, and when we talk about affordable houses, that's the very lowest end. And it really relates, not just to the cost of the house, but also the person's ability to pay for it.
Right.
So that's your subsidized housing. And those subsidies come from all different places. They come from, you know, federal Section 8 housing, things like that, the Housing Authority. And then there's nonprofit organizations that get grants to help out on those. And the city pitches in. Everybody pitches in what they can for that kind of subsidized housing. So technically, the term affordable housing, we call it capital A or small a, affordable, because it's confusing. Because when I think of housing affordability, I think of like everything up to like people who are wealthy enough that it's not an issue.
Right.
But affordable housing with the capital A means, basically means subsidized housing. And there's very few private builders who work in that area, because there's just, and it's not because they're, you know, greedy or something, it's just they literally.
Can't afford to do it.
Can't afford to do it.
Affordable housing isn't affordable for them.
Yeah, so, and then. Yeah, so and tha- and that's okay, but they come in at what's would be called maybe the attainable or middle or more middle level housing. And these are houses that are in the middle middle range or even lower middle range that most working people should be able to afford. But right now, housing costs are too high, the gap between what people earn and what housing costs is is too big. And um I think the city could. I think we just need to really work with the builders, those houses need to be built by the private sector. That that's not subsidized housing. But helping them get the cost down low enough and also helping people, you know. Stimulate the economy so wages come up, so that gap gets smaller and more people can get into housing. And impact fees, there there are a lot, there's a lot of things that the city. They've tried to do, but haven't really gotten far enough to make a big dent and impact fees is certainly one of it, but all all kinds of fees.
What does that mean? What does that mean, impact fees haven't gotten far enough?
For the general public, because many can understand, but.
So there there are a lot of fees, if if you wanna build a house, there's a lot, there's a lot of fees and impact fees. Are fees um that are charged for new construction, and this could be commercial and residential, but I think we're focusing on residential here. And the idea is that when we build new houses, there'll be more people, there'll be more traffic. There'll be more expenses in the infrastructure and and the roads and park and. Police and fire, like if you build a bunch of new houses, you might have to build a new fire station. Um you might have to widen a road or or build a new road, um and so the the. Those things need to be done, generally cities pay for those, but um. Unless you have a, the city is really flush, if if things are tight, which they almost always are. The impact fees ask the are required that the builders contribute to those expenses. That the that the new construction and the.
The person purchasing the home.
Will get passed on. Yeah, I mean, you're you're getting right to the heart of the conundrum, so. The relationship between the fees um and some of the other expenses, cause there's other expenses too, like getting through the approval process. If that takes too long, I I did a development, I can tell you that once you get your shovel out. You you have to go to the bank and you have to get a construction loan and they're just like, okay, it starts tomorrow. And the interest rates on construction loans are really high. And right now, with high interest rates anyway, they're even, they're astronomical. And so literally time is money. And so it's it's a race to get through that approval process and to really fire up your crew and get things going. And then firing up a crew, that's another issue, if there's a shortage of contractors, subcontractors. So that takes more time and they charge more, that's more money, all these things keep adding up. And at and at the end of it, it's just costing too much to build a house and to build a house, so what can the city do? Uh well, they can't control interest rates, they can't control the price of, you know, lumber and aluminum and metal that come from who knows where. Um but they can adjust fees. Uh they can uh work on the zoning to allow the builders to. Build more houses per lot in more places and that gets some people upset because they, everybody wants to have their dream. Two acre white picket fence, swing set and golden retriever in the backyard house, but. It it's some, at some point, like the affordability of the housing and people to be able to get into ownership. Butts up with, you know, the ideal, everybody has a big lot kind of thing, so um. To me, it's it's really a matter of making narrowing that gap between what. The the costs that builders have, uh i- if it costs less, they'll build more.
It's an odd concept.
So I think just think at every turn in our budgeting and our prioritization, we have to say, okay, well. We we need to set these fees, we need to pay for the, you know, these, the cost of of development and growth. But how's that gonna affect the affordability of the house? We have to keep that lens on.
Why is Montrose able to not have impact fees and they are growing?
I don't know Montrose's system, but one thing I will say is is. When we compare to other communities, we have to be very careful because we're a little different than most in that the city does not. Collect uh property taxes. So some of these others. Well, the county, the county does.
No, the city does too.
So it's it's not a big pot of money that we have to work with, like most places, so. We're mostly reliant on sales tax.
So Montrose has higher property taxes, you think?
I don't, I don't know anything about Montrose.
That why wouldn't we look at their model if they're able to keep the cost of impact fees down and say. Is this just because the fee is somewhere else or is this because they um have figured out? That if they lower the fees, that they'll get more building and then they'll also improve just overall. Because some of those impact fees, if we have more people coming in, those people are now paying more sales taxes, which we say. That's that's where we're getting some of our money. And if the city has the major responsibility of providing for roads and. Uh safety and fire and all of that, that um. We're not requiring the developer to do as much, because those people that are moving in are gonna start. Paying some of those fees, I could be totally wrong, Ken, I mean, I could be often.
I will tell you, no, the 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 theory that you're putting forth and and we hear this from the Builders. Uh Association is perfectly sound. The the problem I have in answering it is I don't have enough information. So I've I've been on the impact. Fee, impact fee stakeholder advisory group. And um and and I've heard all that and um I heard it the other night at city council, I guess that was last night actually. Um and and I've heard it over the years, um and the reasoning is sound, but. What is missing is is like some numbers and and um. What I'm, you might call like a pro forma or a a financial analysis, like. How much revenue does the new growth actually contribute? Uh they do contribute, people move here, they get jobs, they they buy things, all that stuff, that's totally legitimate. But what was missing in this whole impact fee uh process is. Numbers haven't been put on those.
How can you though, if you don't allow them to do that, how are you going to say you have a number?
Well, all of these things are done on projections, so if we're gonna project what the maximal impact fees are, we should be able to project. What, you know, what the the, there's science to all that, there's experts that do these projections and you're right. It's all projecting the future, so. Uh but you can use.
Can I also use some uh just qualitative analysis and say, let's look at this community and they're doing it and they aren't being successful?
But then we have to also remember that the communities that we're now looking at are on the eastern slope. Not on the western slope. Except for Montrose, which is would be uh. Yeah, exactly, it's just uh they're more geared the same way we are, whereas the eastern slope is on a whole nother.
That's yeah, I don't see much value in comparing, uh yeah, things are different here, I I think the more we just. Stick to analyzing what's going on here and what's, uh you know, the the projections, the be- the best we can, the better, but. I I think what we need to is get all of those, these are, you guys are bringing up all the factors that are involved. It's like having puzzle pieces. Right, but y- you you have to then figure out how to put the puzzle pieces together, but if you were missing. Say you you had a five piece puzzle and you were missing two of them. How, you can't. So that's all I'm saying is um. Maybe we don't need any more impact fees, um maybe we need part of what the quote maximum is, maybe we need all of it. I doubt we need all of it, but but let's let's just be open minded, okay, let's let's just say. In truth, we don't know how much impact fees we need, if any, because we don't have these other numbers, like. Like what other sources of revenue, are there places we could cut the those future expenses, trim them down, or they. You know, is there a little fat in there that could be trimmed off? How much additional revenue would the growth itself bring? All those factors, it's like a math problem, like an equation or a formula, you can't solve it when you're missing pieces of the.
And I think what you're pointing out is really true and city council said, yep, we wanna go to phase two and the thing. It's again, like they're hurrying to make this decision, when what is the need to hurry at this point?
I am not gonna disagree with you on that one.
Because I mean, if we could get some more of that information. And um you know, one of the things that you said, and I'm I'm picking right out of your thing.
Oh, good.
Out of your website.
I read that six weeks ago, that feels like a lifetime right now, so I hope I'm still on the same.
Restoring and retaining public trust is my highest priority. And you obviously think by saying that, that the public trust has been re- eroded.
I think it has, yes.
And why has that happened? I think you've been hitting on it when you say always rush and the public feels like. All of a sudden, the decision, even um even when they're talking about, and I wanna talk about that a little bit more. Moving the homeless thing, then all of a sudden they're saying, it's it's like it's a done deal and when they even put up the first one. I know um Laurel Cole was sat down with us and she was on the committee that was deciding how they were gonna use those, use that money. And she said, you know, we were so collaborative and that's what she liked about it, and she said, I thought we came up with great ideas. And this idea wasn't even on the table and that's what got implemented and I think.
Very much like fourth and fifth street.
I think people feel blindsided all the time and when you say, well, well, we listened and we, but then you did something totally different. Than what what you said you listened to. So what what is your comment in saying that?
It it is, it is along those lines for sure, so. I think my role as as a potential city council person is to. Understand what the community's thinking and saying at large, e- everybody's not gonna be the same by any means. But if you talk to enough people, you get a sense of what the predominant views are. And there's no question uh that when I talk to people, and I've talked to a lot of people, I've talked to. Leaders, I've talked to people on the street, my hairdresser, you name it, I've talked to them, talking to you guys. And um and you guys aren't shy about giving your opinions, I love that. That's what it's all about, that's how we learn that. I have no question that the predominant view is that the city. It has is having a tendency to move uh at what I call too far, too fast. Um and without uh enough, and I'm gonna emphasize this word, meaningful public engagement. So that's kinda the triad that I think most people uh uh are are talking about. And they do use words like blindsided or, you know, shocked and and things like that, or left out or um uh and. Once public trust starts sliding, it can be a real rapid slide. And and at the end of that slide is conspiracy theory, you know.
And we know it's there.
And and that's now you're getting into extremism and and like closed minds. It it's okay to think, wow, something going on that, you know, we don't know about, there there's nothing wrong with having that thought, it's a natural thought. Right, every time something's messes up, uh our, where do our minds goes, goes old, there's either, they're either just. Making dumb mistakes or there's a conspiracy, right, so that's that's a natural way to think, but. But eh once your mind closes and you take, oh, it's it's a conspiracy, they're just like out to to just, you know, blah blah. Then um a a government's ineffective at that point, they've they've lost their own public. Um and then they start mis- distrusting the public, then you get mutual distrust and it's all over, then you just. You need to. So I don't think we're, I'm sorry, but I'm just gonna say, I don't think we're that far. Right, I think there's an erosion of public trust, but I do think I I I believe in and I trust the good nature of the people of Grand Junction. And I don't think they're gonna lock in, uh I I I think, I think the situation can be improved and. And what I would advocate if if I'm elected, even if I'm not, I would advocate for this either way. Is that the the city get better about the issue we talked, the 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 two big issues are. How fast do we need to do this, I mean, what's, i- is it a hurry up, or are they bleeding? Or are they just like, I don't feel good, so there's there's that and um then it would also be. A- assessing eh the whether this is something that would be really nice to have? Or is this something that we really, really need? And and that's not to say we shouldn't try to achieve the nice things and and get there. But you get there in a little different way, it's it's a little slower, it's a little more patient, i- it's maybe. Maybe you'd do more of that in the years where the budget is really rosy and you've got a little. To me, it's more like, think about it like a kitchen table, Christmas is coming up, like what are we gonna get the kids for Christmas? Is this the year they get the the big, you know, the the moped or uh the Xbox and all the expensive things? Or is this like, eh, we'll get some new ski socks? And that's what normal people do, right, that's what businesses do, that's what households do, that's what governments should do too. So I think, I think i- if the the city and the council behaves in that way. Communicates why this year we're spending more, this year we're spending less, you know. We can, yeah, let's 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 go for it a little bit because, you know, we're in shape to do it or. You know, everybody take a chill bill pill, we're we're gonna be focusing on, you know, the meat and potatoes issues this year. Um and right now, the biggest meat and potato issue is housing, so, uh you know, kinda, it keeps coming back to that. Is like, the lens has to be, how does this affect people's ability to live in an appropriate level of housing for where they're at?
Just out of curiosity, I'm going to ask you, what do you think the debruising of the city has done for all of this?
That one might be over my head right now, honestly, um I I'm just gonna hon- honestly answer that, is that I don't have a great understanding of that. Um and I know it's, i- i- if I would give an opinion now, I probably would be giving an opinion without having enough information. So I think that's something uh probably anybody who hasn't really been at the table in those and. Uh you know, hasn't studied extensively would have a hard time answering, so I I would just stay open minded, I would. Uh I'm sure I would need to learn more about that and I would enter that open minded and I'd wanna hear the arguments on both sides and understand it better. So maybe next time around.
Curious about the fact that right now, the city seems to have an open checkbook. Uh we don't seem to have any checks and balances on what they're spending and where they're going with it and how fast they're moving. As we have already been talking about how fast they're moving, it's just the amount that they're spending and how how quickly they're spending it. We don't have that kinda money.
They've said that for the next five years, they'll have a shortfall. So if you have a shortfall, you know, my husband has a famous saying, he says, if you're in a hole, stop digging. And that does not seem to be happening.
That's where we need to put the all stop in, or at least in my opinion.
And I bring this issue up every single time, just so you know, it's not new. Wine, my favorite wine.
Okay, this is your soapbox?
This is my soapbox. Um and it's it's an empathy for, you know, looking at the type of population, I know you would love to see young people. Move in here, but I think that fifty plussers feel like to a large extent. And fifty plussers in in our income range, because, you know, you as a doctor make more than we did. All the way through and so ideas, you can be charitable, much more charitable with your ideas and your money. Than people that are in the middle. And we're talking lower, middle, middle. And so areas that I have a concern with and I don't swim, you know, I I could, but it messes up your hair. I I prefer to do things that don't mess up your hair. So, but Orchard Mesa Pool for one, we have had that for years and years and years and I went back and looked. And um they had the um municipal pools over a hundred years old. And the reason this went downhill is because it wasn't taken care of, it was not ever properly maintained. And now it's, well, we need to close it, cause it's gonna be too much to fix it up. But then you turn around and say, well, we need to spend five million dollars on Hawthorne Park. And I'm thinking, these people for, to a large extent, not Hawthorne, I'm sorry.
Emerson.
Yeah, not Emerson, Emerson's the skate park.
Skate park.
That they wanna spend five million on Whitman Park to make it this beautiful thing. But those people in Orchard Mesa, a lot of them, if you have something that's affordable for them, it it it's gotta be. If we're saying we need recreation and especially if you say we need an impact fee to increase the parks. What are you doing to take care of the parks that are there or the recreation places that are there, because those people. You know, you're not gonna send your kid on their bike clear over to the new rec center. That's an area of town where it would be nice to have that maintained and there's no reason why it shouldn't be. And they've done the same thing to Lincoln Park Golf Course, they've they've switched the budget, and this was done a year, years ago. But they switched the budget from being under Parks and Rec to being under general maintenance. And then said, now you need to um make sure this thing takes, sustains itself. Well, we're paying taxes to have recreation and to have that maintained and perhaps to subsidize that. Just like you wanna subsidize housing, to subsidize those to make it affordable and nice. For people that, you don't know how many seniors golf at Lincoln Park, and the reason they golf at Lincoln Park. Is they can golf for eleven dollars for nine rounds.
They can't afford Redlands Country Club or Adobe Creek or however many others.
But like Tim Tofoya says, well, I couldn't afford to have grass on the driving range. Because I only have X amount of of money. And so the grass has holes and he goes, well, you know, the the soil is bad. You should see Lincoln Park, it was built in nineteen twenty-six, if you go back and you look at Bernie Bush's photos of it. And you know, we've had major tournaments and stuff on it, that grass was beautiful. And the trees, the nine tenths, well, not nine tenths of them, several of the trees are dead, but I can't afford to take the trees out. And replant because I don't have funds. So if you can't do that there, why would you consider redoing another park? That doesn't have access to parking, you're not gonna send your child to a, to that park by themselves. To play or to do any other activities when you don't have any parking or any way, but you have these other two places. That have just totally been ignored and said, you have to subsidize yourself.
Eh and so Lincoln Park and Orchard Mesa.
Yeah, why? I mean, that is something that I feel, like those are two things you can point to. And it's like, oh, you know, that that's old, it'll go away.
What you have, in other words.
Yeah, I I'm not sure I have an opinion right now on so on that, um I have been. A little confused by the whole process of Emerson and Whitman. They, it seems a a little bit reactive, um and. Uh I don't really understand what the what the overall plan, there's definitely. Parking issues and accessibility issues there, and then like you said, is that siphoning off. Uh resources that maybe could be put to restoring and repairing and maintaining. Some of our existing, very popular, very accessible parks, so. Um I I think those are very legitimate concerns and I would, you know, try to look into those. Um I I don't know if those are so far in motion that there's anything. That could be done about them, I I don't know, but I think those are, I I think you're keying in on the right issues and I'd really like to see them. See the whole process be more transparent and have a better sense, I mean, maybe there is some. Grand plan that that these all fit together in, that makes sense fiscally and in terms of. Public access, but maybe there isn't, I don't know.
If there was, why don't they bring it forth? Because that again, is a trust issue.
I agree with that, and that's why it's, that's why I'm struggling to answer that, because I just don't feel like, you know, until I'm. On the council, there, I feel like I, just as a citizen, I'm just really not sure what the plan is. Skate park, I mean, it seems like for people who skate, it's a great thing, but again, I'm not sure about.
World class skate park.
World class skate park, yes, um but I don't know how many, what percentage of the population actually would use that. Um certainly those that use it, it's it's great, um uh and. Uh the parking issue and accessibility issue, I think I would have my twelve year old ride, ride his bike. To that, you know, that sit that place there, so parents have to drop him off or they're teenagers. So I think there's, you know, you could raise issues about that, um and then Whitman, who knows, they just slapped a. Slapped a fence around it and said, we're gonna reimagine it, and I have seen the plans, they're quite.
Beautiful.
Quite beautiful, but is is that the best thing for the bug?
Or could you just restore the park and make it a nice, I mean, at least visually nice. As far as making sure the trees and the grass are all growing and you have park benches.
Just like an old fashioned park, a place you go to, cause it has nice trees and benches and you can have a little.
Maybe it swings there.
Pic nap, yeah, so I I think those are totally legitimate issues, I I. Hope to learn more about those if if I get elected, I don't know right now, really any way to find out. Much more about it, I I'm I'm in no different position than you guys. Scratching your heads and just wondering, is this really the best plan and what about Lincoln Park and what about Orchard Park? I I am going to um get more information, I'm gonna talk to the folks in Orchard Park, that's on my calendar coming up, I'm. Very interested to hear, you know, from the horse's mouth, the the folks that are are working on that. Um you know, what they're taking is and it it's ex- it's good, it would, it's expensive, any way you you look at it. But so are what they have planned uh between.
They say regardless, they're gonna be spending money, so why don't we spend money where the people need it? Not where this utopian view comes from.
And I do think that.
Legitimate questions, totally.
And it is helpful and I, and if you feel like you're being picked on, you're not.
It's fine, you guys are, you guys are bringing up the tough issues and and I'm not gonna pretend I'm an answer man with all the answers to tough issues. But I I will acknowledge when you've hit something that definitely need, you know, deserves to be looked more deeply at. And and more more comprehensively, can't just look at things by themselves, yeah, that what they have designed for Whitman, that would be super cool. It's super cool, but how does it fit in in the in the broader context? Is that the best thing for the most people with the limited funding we have?
If you stick Whitman Park somewhere where everybody could have access to it, that would be a whole different ballgame, but, excuse me. We have the new recreation center going in that's supposed to do that.
That is on one end of town.
Right.
Right, yeah, and you need recreation throughout, because that is part of the impact, these is for recreation.
Oh, for for sure, that's a, the park, the parks is a, is one of the big chunks. So, yeah, they, I mean, the the decision's already been made and that that did go to the voters, so. Um that the the rec, the the new.
Right, the rec center, yes, of course.
And that huge park and everything. That was the location that we had to work with, that was, that was the thing, i- i- if we could just pick a location. Of course, I think we'd pick something more central. But that's just kinda the way that played out, and so, um but all these other parks. You know, just planning them to like, how can we best distribute our resources? So that most people can enjoy our parks, um it is a very viable question.
And how can we make sure that, you know, you're not just saying, okay, we're not gonna do anything with that money. But we're gonna siphon that money off somewhere else, so that, and sometimes it's putting it in a different department. To do that.